We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome our listening audience at WCBU and Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Akerson.
Here.
Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregel. And Councilmember Turner. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. (Clerk) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and just as far off. Okay, we have one proclamation this evening, and we're going to invite in the Peoria Notre Dame soccer team, and Councilwoman Jensen is going to join me for this one, too. Whereas this is the third time the Peoria Notre Dame soccer program finished in the top 25 in the nation, currently ranked at number 11, they previously ranked at number four in 2010, and at number seven in 2012. And whereas the Peoria Notre Dame team won the Big 12 Conference with a perfect 10-0 record, outscoring conference opponent 63-1, with the closest margin of victory at 4-0. They beat nationally-ranked Milwaukee Marquette, the Wisconsin State Champion, 2-1 for the first time in the program's history. Their only high school loss during the regular season was a 1-0 loss to 3A State Champion Naperville North. And whereas Peoria Notre Dame won the IHSA Regional, Sectional, and Super-Sectional Titles to become the first program in IHSA history to win 20 sectional titles and finish as the Class 2A State Runner-Up. And whereas soccer has been played at Peoria Notre Dame for over 30 years, only eight teams have had the opportunity to play in the state championship game. The future is bright at Peoria Notre Dame. Coach Mike Bear will have eight starters from this year's state runner-up team, including Noah Madrigal, Miles Safanagon, Michaela Hood, and Lucas Fontana. Other returning starters include defenders Alex Cott, Lucas Beebe, Brody Seton, as well as Declan Dillon. Now therefore I, Jamar Dismire, of the city of Peoria, do hereby recognize and congratulate the Peoria Notre Dame High School Soccer Program in Peoria, Illinois.[1155.61][1155.61](Applause). We're going to have the coach come up and introduce the players. Just want a quick note of how proud the city is to be represented at the state by Peoria Notre Dame, who obviously have built an outstanding program that's recognized not only across the state of Illinois, but also across the country. So congratulations to the Peoria Notre Dame, the coaches, the players, the parents, because it's a combined effort by everybody to help them accomplish what they've accomplished. So our congratulations to them. Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. Just on behalf of the city, we're thrilled for this entire team. You guys played great and represented the city so well across the country and in this state. It's especially meaningful for me. I've seen a lot of these guys grow up through playing soccer with my oldest son. A lot of them I've watched play since they were about seven years old. Our hats off to all of you. You've done our city very proud, and to Coach Bear, you've got a fantastic program, and the city of Peoria is very lucky to have such a great soccer program at Notre Dame High School. So with that, I will lend it on to you, hand it over to you.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank Mayor Artis for having us down here tonight, and Councilwoman Jensen for doing this proclamation and putting together for us. Kind of like that was said, it was a great regular season for us, we accomplished so much. We came up a little bit short of our ultimate goal of winning a state championship, but we're excited about the team we have coming back for next season. Like the mayor said, we have eight starters coming back next year, so we hope to come back and visit you again next year, hopefully talking about a state championship. Also, I just want to say how proud we are when we go around the state and around the region and play nationally-ranked programs to represent the city of Peoria, and how proud we are to do that year in and year out. So thank you for your support every year, and hopefully we'll see you again next year. And I'd like to finish by just introducing the team. I'll just kind of say their names if they just want to step forward and raise their hand to give the recognition. Lucas Fontana, Kevin Wiles, Charlie Lawless, Finn Donley, Lucas Beebe, Declan Dillon, Brody Seton, Michael Merhab, Michael Dahlquist, Jack Imesodi, Noah Madrigal, Joe Gross, Alex Cott, Charlie Wall, Caleb Hard, Thomas Oliver, Jake Cusack, Joseph Legaspi, Miles Sopanavong[1329.62][1329.62](took me a long time to learn how to say that one), Ethan Miller, Michaela Hood, Anthony Alwyn, and Coach Ben Ralph, and Coach Mark Schreiter, who couldn't be here tonight, and also our manager, my son Dylan Bear, who's been with us all season long. So again, thank you for having us, appreciate the recognition, and take care.[1349.27][1349.27](Applause).
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting held on November 20, 2018, and the special joint city council and town board meeting held on December 4, 2018, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Turner. Any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we're at the township portion of the agenda. 18-361 is a communication from the town officials with a request to approve monthly anticipated expenditures for January 2019 for the town of the city of Peoria.
Trustee Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve these expenditures and the report in reference to those expenditures.
Thank you. Seconded by trustee Turner. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at the consent agenda, 18-362. First of all, there is a handout in yellow on your desk, and it changed the title just a little bit, so I'll read the correct title. But this is a request from the Advisory Commission on Human Services to approve the funding for 2019 CDBG public service applications as outlined. 18-363 is a request to authorize the city manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement negotiated between the city of Peoria and the four labor unions, Teamsters Local 627, Laborers Local 165, Carpenter's Local 237, and Painters Local 157, that comprise the multi-union agreement to cover the period from December 1, 2018 through November 30, 2021. 18-364 is a request to execute a joint agreement with IDOT for a project to modernize the traffic signal management system throughout the city of Peoria. 18-365 is a request to approve the site application for a Class K rental hall liquor license with the retail sale on-site consumption of alcohol on the premises at Gon Axe Throwing, 1001 Southwest Washington Suite 5-201, contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. An 18-366 is a request to approve the site application for a Class B restaurant 50% food liquor license with the retail sale of alcohol at Pregame Pub &amp; Grill, 4712 North University, Unit B, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. That completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any items to remove from consent this evening? Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 18-362 and 18-365, please.
62 and 65. Councilmember Euler.
18-363.
Any other items to remove from consent? We have a motion to approve the remaining items. Councilman Rigenbach, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
18-362 is the request to approve the 2019 funding for the CDBG public service applications.
Councilwoman Moore.
Mr. Mayor, just quickly, I wanted to acknowledge the volunteer commission that administers this, these funds. I don't know if Catherine Murphy, who is the city staff, is here. Yeah, she's in the back. And I know the president of this commission is not feeling well, so she's not here today. But I just wanted to publicly thank them for all the work that they do. I don't know if any, is anyone else from the committee here? No? Okay, thanks, Catherine. I thank the commission for all that they do in determining who is eligible to receive the funds that are actually pass-through funds, these are not city of Peoria funds, but funds that we receive from the government to distribute to the public, for the public good. There's a lot of work that goes into this, a lot of grading of applications that come in. It can really get, I'll just say, interesting, some of the conversations we have, but I'm telling you, this group really studies why these funds are there, and the groups that are going to receive the funds, and each of the groups come in and has to make a presentation before the commission. And they, the commission, I'm telling you, these folks ask fantastic questions. A lot of them are in the public sector, so they understand grant writing. And without going on very long, I just wanted to say thank you to them all, and I'd like to move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Akerson. Further discussion on this item, Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to thank the commission for its hard work. I know how hard it is sometimes to review all the grant requests that you get when you're on a commission like this, and we appreciate that. I just have a question, I think the city manager can probably answer. Every year, this commission re-looks at what the priorities should be, is that right?
That is correct.
And then that usually comes to council before the application process starts, correct? Or, I see Director Black there nodding his head.
I believe that, I believe that this time, it did come before council. We did discuss the priorities, yes.
But my question is, every year, don't they re-look at the priorities and we give some input? I know that we have in the past.
Yes, ma'am. Basically, what happens is, the commission does an internal
So I guess I'm going to put in my plug here, which I have also in other times, because I know we used to fund domestic violence and sexual assault was one of the funding priorities. So I'd like that to go back to the commission to consider that as one of the top priorities as well as human trafficking and homelessness for next year. Thank you.
Any additional discussion on this item? We have a motion in a second. Seeing none, please cast your ballot. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Eighteen dash three sixty-three is the request to execute the collective bargaining agreements for the four labor unions.
Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I've stated on previous collective bargaining agreements and other employee compensation discussions, I cannot in good conscience vote on a contract that continues to give raises at a time when we cannot afford to pay our bills. We literally a week ago just levied another fee on our citizens and we are making this a very uncompetitive environment. I understand the challenges that come with fighting these and going to arbitration, and this may be one of the smaller increases and smaller contracts, but the same theory stands, I cannot support giving raises and voting on contracts that allow employees to live outside of the city in a fiscal time like we have been experiencing when we have to continue to go back to our citizens and ask for more money. So I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion? Councilman Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I enthusiastically move for approval.
Motion to approve. Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Is there any further discussion on this item?
Chairman.
Councilman Grab.
I'd like to commend Director Reese and our personnel department for amicably negotiating this contract and resolving it. When I came to the council as second district councilman in 2013, there were many problems with some of the folks represented here. Morale is improved, this means better delivery, more efficient delivery of services for our people, and I can't imagine where the city of Peoria would be without its Public Works Department, especially when we have the big storms and emergencies with our roads and when we're all concerned about our potholes and condition of infrastructure that at some point can no longer be repaired, must be replaced. And thank you very much, Director Reese, for your work and also helping to move this group of workers into a much better place relative to where they were a few years ago before you took the helm. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? We have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes with nine ayes, one no. Councilmember Euler. Madam Clerk.
Eighteen dash three sixty-five is the request to approve the site application for Class A, I'm sorry, Class K for gone axe throwing on Southwest Washington.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question for Corporation Council on this item. Are we assured that we have no legal liability should a gone, if the name of the business is gone axe throwing, and they're going to be throwing axes?
Yes, we are assured of that.
Okay, and they're, and they have alcohol there?
Correct.
And we don't have any liability should an axe go afoul and?
We do not.
Okay, so as long as this, you know, we are in no legal jeopardy, then I will reluctantly, only because of this called gone axe throwing, not because I know anything about the business, but I know what an axe looks like and I know what it looks like when you throw it, but move it for approval since it's apparently legal.
Motion to approve. Seconded by Councilman Regenbach. Discussion on this item? Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also, the name gave me pause when I saw it, and I've, you know, read through the minutes. Was there any discussion from the police during the meeting that if somebody that was there, does Corporation Council know or the police chief? Because it just seems a bit concerning that they're going to be throwing axes. I understand it's in a caged area, but?
The police had no objection to this request. It's in the minutes.
And there was no, there was no real discussion other than what's in the minutes about the danger of throwing axes? I guess, is it at a target?
This is, there was discussion and the police indicated they had no concern or objection. However, this has been done throughout the country. It's not a?
I see that.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I did, I did see that, yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm finished.
Okay, it just, to me seems, it just is a bit concerning to me. I don't think I'll be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion passes with seven ayes, three noes. Voting no, councilmembers Akison, Jensen, and Moore. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have a presentation. Eighteen dash three sixty-seven is a request to receive and file a presentation regarding Bradley University's contribution to the city of Peoria.
Okay. I'd like to welcome Renee Charles and Dr. McDowell. Will recall, probably four or six weeks ago, we had a presentation from the University of Illinois College of Medicine, letting us know some of the exciting things that were happening there, and that was the first in what will be a number of different businesses and other entities within the city of Peoria that will come in from time to time and bring us up to date on what they're doing and what they have going on. We know that Bradley University is one of our largest employers. They employ over 2,000 people there and bring millions of dollars into our community, so we're really happy to have you come down and give us a presentation. Thank you.
I want to talk a little bit about the economic development opportunities that Bradley has, as well as a few other things that we do at Bradley that really helps with the economic viability of our community. Maybe. There we go. So Bradley's overall economic impact is around $310 million per year, and the operating budget of Bradley is $157 million. And when you look at full-time and part-time employees, there are more than 1,300 of them at Bradley. So when that trickles down, we look at the jobs that are created to support our employees, we're looking at around 3,200 jobs in the local community. So as the mayor said, there is an economic impact that Bradley has on the community, and these are just some of the numbers most recently. Cultural impact that Bradley has. So when you're looking at enhancing the quality of life, we all know that that has an economic impact as well. A lot of you may not recognize that Bradley does a lot through the community, from thought leadership and lectures, theater, musical performances, and of course, we have our vocal performances, art shows, and all the athletics. So all of those are open to the community. Those help us to put money back into the community. All of those are open to you. Many of them are actually free of charge, so it enhances the quality of life, which as we talked about, helps to enhance the economic development in the area. One of the things you've probably heard about, at least I hope you have, is the 3D printed Habitat Challenge that Bradley's working on. In partnership with Caterpillar and with NASA, we're bringing in teams from all around the world to work with 3D printers to print potential habitats that will go to Mars. NASA will be using these as prototypes to potentially put on the red planet when they take their missions in space. This is happening right here in Peoria, and it's happening with Bradley's help. Again, bringing people to this community, showcasing what we have in this area, that's helping people to recognize what Bradley really has and what Peoria has to offer. So the student impact, we have 5,400 or so, that's a rolling three-year average of our students. They attend our community events, they fill the hotels when they come to visit, they eat out, they buy living supplies, they're putting money into our community. And when you look at our alumni, we have more than 14,000 of our alumni who are working in our regional workforce. We often talk about a lot of our graduates not staying in Peoria, but this shows you that 14,000 of them are in our current workforce right now. So we are trying to do what we can to keep those employees coming and staying right here in Peoria. Diversity is another thing that really enhances a community and the economic viability of a community. This class we have right now, that just started in the fall, it is the second most geographically diverse, the second largest in history, and the second most ethnically diverse class in Bradley's history. So we are working on diversity and bringing more of a diversity into our community to help along with all of your efforts. Volunteering is something else that we feel Bradley has an impact in the community. Our students, and these are people who are 18 to 22 years old, they fundraised more than $141,000 last year for nonprofit agencies in the community. 46,000 hours of service that they put in, and that equates to more than $1.2 million that our current students put into our community. And when you talk about volunteering, we can't overlook our staff and our faculty because the majority of people who work at Bradley are involved in the community. What you see here is just a handful of the places that our employees are involved. They don't necessarily have a badge on that says Bradley like you see with maybe the hospitals or Caterpillar, but just because they don't have Bradley's name written on their clothing or on their cars or on their badge, doesn't mean they're not there making a difference. And when we talk about economic development specifically, the Turner Center for Entrepreneurship is a part of Bradley that's an outwardly facing organization that helps small businesses to grow. And look at the numbers here. We've served more than almost 700 clients in the last year, more than 3,200 counseling hours. The jobs that were created, the jobs that were retained, all of these numbers right here showcase what this particular organization does from an outward-facing perspective to our community. So if you're looking at having a small business and wanting to expand it, the Turner Center for Entrepreneurship at Bradley is one way that you can do that. And then the Foster College of Business is one of the five colleges at Bradley that also has an outwardly facing perspective. The Small Business Development Center, the Center for Professional Excellence, we also have our students working on student projects for local businesses, and they do consulting projects for local businesses. The numbers here are just within the last few years of what our students have done. Again, these are things that we're doing and our students are doing to impact the economic viability of the community. And of course, we have a huge project going on right now that's a 270,000 square foot, $100 million facility that will bridge the gap between engineering and business to help better prepare our students for when they go into the marketplace and go into the workplace, that they're more suited for the jobs that we have available and jobs that are all throughout the community.
So, just yesterday, we had the topping off ceremony for this new facility. It was very exciting to see what was happening, and it's very exciting to know what kind of experiences we're going to have as a result of this new facility being put together. One thing about this building was it was initially called the Convergence Center because of the convergence between engineering and business. However, one thing that we've done at Bradley is we've decided to not only take this convergence between business and engineering and capitalize on that, we've decided to expand this to the entire university overall and begin to create a real unique learning experience that is really uncharacteristic of other universities around the nation. Instead of having individual silos where our students are learning individual topics or whatever it is that they're focusing on, engineering, business, education, et cetera, we're going to begin to create opportunities for these students to learn across those silos and with the external community as well, with external partners. And we call that convergence. This is something that we've decided to make a differentiator for the university, but one big thing about this is it also has such a great big impact on Peoria as well. When we, when we talk about convergence, convergence is really being innovative and learning to understand how to, how to educate our students in a new way. So what is convergence? And how does that impact the greater Peoria area? How does, how does that impact our city? Well, convergence is really a dynamic learning experience that is interdisciplinary in nature. So again, students working across the aisles within the university, but also has that external partnership relationship as well. So we want all of our students, no matter what background they are, to be learning this, experiences, have experiences all across the entire threshold, but then also be experiencing things with the Peoria area as well. One thing about this is that as we do this, we're going to better educate our students and we're going to be better aligned for future right here in the area. I love this quote by Richard Riley, "We are currently preparing students for jobs that don't yet exist using technologies that haven't yet been invented. In order to solve problems, we don't even know our problems yet." And I think that's a really good picture of who we are and what we're doing. If we talk about this convergence, while this is something that we're going to push moving forward, we're already really involved in this. In fact, if you look at the screen, you'll see engineering students. There's over 60 students involved in convergence-based projects with 22 external partners right here in the area. If we talk about the College, Slank College of Communication and Fine Arts, 495 students currently involved in 41 convergence projects with 34 external partners. Liberal Arts and Sciences, 71 projects with 54 partners. If we move over to Education and Health Sciences, 205 students with 31 partners. The College of Business, 200, oh, well over 200 students with around 40 different partners. That's a lot of connections going on within our students and within the local area. That's over a quarter of our students right now are involved in projects that cross their discipline boundaries and are involved in projects right here in this area, which is very exciting. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to get our students involved in these local opportunities. We're trying to get our students involved in development for the future. We're trying to get our students involved in local businesses and the local entrepreneurial ecosystem. And one way we're doing that is we're hosting events that help to facilitate the local startup and entrepreneurial ecosystem as well. In fact, just last week, and a few of you were there, we hosted our first entrepreneurial ecosystem and convergence conference, with had almost 200 people from the local area involved on campus, learning how we can work more together, how our students can be involved with them, and how we can move forward overall in our economic area. So really, what we're asking for is we want the city to be involved. We want you to attend lectures. We want you to visit our classrooms, be guest speakers, hire our students, put together internships for our students, because there's so many different opportunities that we can all move forward together in developing this region and really become a leader. Again, I want to just say one more thing. We had a national speaker here that was here last week compared Peoria to Silicon Valley, and a lot of people think, well, that's crazy. Man, he made a very compelling argument for why we actually excel and have greater opportunities for individuals who are looking at business development right here in Silicon Valley. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Dr. McDowell or Ms. Charles? Councilman Grab.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I speak for everyone here. We're very excited with the development of the Convergence Center and what it means for interdisciplinary education. Could you just comment briefly on what the building is going to look like and how it's more or less reflective of the manner in which you want to operate and relate to the neighborhoods surrounding Bradley?
Well, the building, as you'll notice, is actually a very attractive building that will enhance the Western Main Street corridor. So the thought for that is that from the main street side, as you look at the building, there is an atrium that brings together the two sides of education, and it will really showcase a welcoming into campus, that we want people to feel like they can come into campus. It's the new front door. But then we also want it to enhance the look of the entire corridor so that people can see that as something that is blossoming, as something that is building, and that will hopefully spur some economic development all the way through the corridor, all the way down to the other end, which is where the medical facilities are.
Fantastic. And, you know, we've been, we've had a presentation from Bradley recently about the interplanetary work that's being done. I would just say that I think Bradley University is poised for fantastic future. It's putting its, certainly its business and engineering school and all the rest of the schools on the cutting edge to draw the best and brightest from all over the world, and we're proud to have you right in the heart of the city, and anything we can do to help, we're happy to do so. One of the things that I would say is if we ever have a chance to get that speaker to come back, the council would be very happy to hear what he is saying. We've known for a long time that our region and our city has a large number of very highly educated people, lots of PhDs around here, and let's not forget the federal research lab and junior college, Bradley, Caterpillar with their doctorates and master's degrees, a very, very highly educated workforce, our four-year medical school, et cetera. So we're so proud of you. It's fantastic. Thanks again for coming tonight.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the council? I would like to repeat again, thank you very much both for coming down tonight. If you're not, you're probably pretty close to having a break, break here, so have a nice break over the holidays, and please extend our thanks to President Roberts.
a very, very highly educated workforce, our four-year medical school, et cetera. So we're so proud of you. It's fantastic. Thanks again for coming tonight.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the council? I would like to repeat again, thank you very much both for coming down tonight. If you're not, you're probably pretty close to having a break here, so have a nice break over the holidays. And please extend our thanks to President Roberts for all the great things happening up on the Hilltop right now. All right, have a good night. We have a motion to receive and file this presentation by Councilman Sears, seconded by Councilman Ruckregal. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots to receive and file. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Our second presentation is 18-368, and it's a request to receive and file the presentation by the Peoria Public Works Department on an update to the solid waste contract.
Director Reese?
All right, thank you. Really just wanted to take this opportunity to update you guys on where we're at with the solid waste contract. And there's been some really good things happening since the contract. And you started it, just wanted to let you guys know about it.
Ms. Markey? 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 So we started this about three years ago with a lot of research and surveys and actually found, and built a lot of areas in town, giving feedback on what the citizens want to see in the solid waste recycling area. We completed about 1,269 of those surveys, and the results that we saw was that a lot of communities actually wanted to see had strong support or some support for increased recycling. So people really wanted to see increase in recycling. There's also a good majority, 61%, that either supported additional yard waste collection. One thing we were bad at before was trying to time that yard waste. We were always ending it about two weeks too soon or starting it two weeks too soon. And so we extended it on both sides, or we're looking to extend it on both sides to capture that. So we did see an increase in recycling because some of the citizens wanted to see, they wanted to extend the yard waste season. And they also were seeing confusion on public outreach or education, public education for all of the solid waste services. So those were things that we tried to incorporate into the contract that can ensure that we did. One thing that we wanted to point out is Peoria really has a severe trash service. There's really no other service like it in the tri-county area. We have weekly trash collection for our citizens. We have unlimited walk-in rates that I don't think that's seen in this offer anywhere around in any other community in here that allows people, once they put out a curb, the PDC will take their carpet, their glove seats, anything that they can put out at the curb, outside electronics, is built into the contract that they will pick up. And it's unlimited trash pickup for that company to charge the citizens. There's no sticker and a limit on the amount of trash you can pick up. And then the new expanded services are moving every other week recycling, and we also extended that yard waste collection. So PDC is a vendor for trash, yard waste, and recycling project. The city is responsible for managing that contract with all other public works. We bill the customers. We have the new items and the contractors that the city is responsible for the public education. We've worked out fees and refunds, some dollars each year to give for that public education. And then they are also responsible for the trash cart manage. It's a big asset, the city has out there, there's over 39,000 trash carts out in the community, which is a little over $2 million of assets in the community that we have. So the new services is, number one, thank you, so from the feedback was increased recycling. So starting in January 7, actually one week after the holidays, recycling will be picked up every other week on their regular collection day. The car deposit was required for recycling and been removed, so there is no deposit required for people to recycle. And if there is a need, they are allowed to have a two-resigned car at their house, but no law, if they sign up for recycling. You can sign up for recycling at the solidwastecollection.com, and citizens who go there can sign up. Recycling is curbside. The city has authority to approve where that is moved from alley to curbside overall. The proposal, except that they are doing moving recycling from alleys to curbsides. But there's some limits on that as far as they don't have driveway access to the street. If there's a barrier, if there's a retaining wall or something that makes it hard for them to take that recycling cart to the street, or if there's a number of steps, and we go through some criteria with the providers so that we have an approval mechanism that's clearly defined as people sign up for that recycling. During the fall here of 2018, we did a carbon audit where, like I said, the city owned so those 39,000-plus carts out in the community, and we actually went and audited all those to give a commitment for what the city has it for, or for the citizens. And while we were doing that, we had any tax or bad information that we put on the card and had recycling, signing postcards, the citizens considered. And we actually had an overwhelming response. Today, we had between email signups or the online signups and postcards, and call-in signups, and almost a little over 3,000 new customers signed up for recycling in the city of Peoria. So that's almost a 30% increase today in the amount of recycling citizens in the city of Peoria. So those carts are set to be delivered next week to the citizens of Peoria. The new signups should be here. So we also extended the yard waste as part of the contract. This year, and it was extended through this week, was the final meeting of the yard waste collection. But next year, it goes from RCT all the way to December 20, which actually extends it quite a bit on each end. And hopefully that's enough time to catch the lead season. Or if we don't catch the lead season, the flood winter picks up a little earlier in the fall, in the spring. We are encouraging residents with those city-owned carts to not use those for yard waste, that they can still use them if they want. Like I said, that is a city asset. The yard waste actually puts more wear and tear on it and makes it more brittle and breaks it sooner. And so our preference is that the citizens use, buy the bags for their yard waste, to have it collected. They don't have to. They definitely use it part of the market, but we are encouraging them to not do that. And the plan is just to try to extend those carts for as long as we possibly can, since the city has a home, and in every kind of situation as possible. So we are working on improved public education and outreach, and this is a picture of what that bagged material looked like, what it was during our product, the cart lot. Everybody that had a cart should have received a plastic bag with some material, education materials in it during the last couple of months. And we've collected a number of households with carts. We do know that there's some out there that we weren't able, they were either not home or they didn't have their cart out at the time, and we have that list over the next couple of months, and we'll go back into the business to capture those. We tried to use, Dr. Barris, we used local families and local owners, so every picture you might see all our stations are actually Peoria people, or people from Peoria in all of our education materials. And that was something we really put in that around, making a local presence and really bring a local layer of all education materials. So if people, part of Beijing is that New Rock is going to look back January 7, and that's where we're working on our education and public outreach. After the holidays, that first week in January, that first full weekend, people, two-thirds of the city is going to have a new collection. So we've really been trying to get that word out to the citizens, so they know when that collection day will happen and where that is. And so those maps are on peoriapicksup.com, if the citizens want to go to that, and they can type in their address, and see what day their collection will be. We've also mailed or made out postcards about when their new collection day. Just trying to reach them all methodically. And on our website, people can also sign up for recycling on four trash carts if something is happening with their trash cart. Starting in 2019, you'll see that there have been some, we've been trying to push out the recycling increase. There we have the RSR, that's the builder space, talking about recycling and our solid waste program. You'll see the city in plus, there's some skin armor that just shows the operation campaign that we're doing, and then also our social media. So the routes are, as I said before, this is one thing we really want to emphasize to citizens, and it will be a big change for two-thirds of the citizens. See, their collection day will change starting January 7. They can go and click on the solidwastecollection.com and look at that, and there's actually two maps, one for trash, one for recycling, that will tell them when their collection day is. And we're also sending out a postcard with those new pages on there. And this is an example of what that postcard looks like. And when they flip it over, it'll actually say when the collection day is, so that information is coming forward. If that helps.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Any questions for Director of Public Works? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Director Reese, a lot of the residents in the First District have alley access now. Is there anything specific going to those individuals, like we're sending out the postcard about the route change? Is it going to indicate for that household that they should be bringing it to the front? I mean, because for decades, they've been taking it to the alley. And I know in the Third District as well, there's some areas in the Third District that have alleys, and probably the Second also. I'm just a little concerned that there's going to be a learning curve that first week, folks are going to miss it, because not only did it change, but then you had to take it to the front of the house instead of to the alley.
So yard waste and solid waste will still remain in that, that is still going to be alley collection. Recycling is the only thing that's going to move from the alley to the curb. Currently, we have about 17,000 customers that have alley collection. And so of those, there's roughly about 1,700 that are recycling currently, and there's probably another 1,000 or 1,200 that signed up for new recycling. And so there are plans going out to them, letting them know that they can be switching from alley to curbside, recycling collection only. And then we're working through, of that 17,000, we narrowed it down to about 3,600 that don't have driveway access. And so now we're going through the evaluation, also to see if there's some other barriers that prevent them from switching from alley to curbside.
With the change in routes that first week, will there be any grace pickups? Somebody missed the pickup because they missed the date, and they need to have someone come out and pick it up? Or does it stay out there all until the next week?
At this point, I have the plan, if it stays out there that week, that's why we're trying to quickly flood the information ahead of time. And we do, there will be a phone-in number for PDC for people to call and try to address that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Reese, and PDC, and FOTH for all the work on this. I think this really shows, this really shows the impact of having a deliberate process. This was not something we rushed into. This is something we took our time on, got public input, and had a lot of discussions with a lot of stakeholders on it. So congratulations for a job well done. There's a couple observations and questions. 3,000 new recycling households, is that the number you said, Director?
That's what we ran as of earlier this year.
And that's a 30% increase in households.
But we have about 11,000 customers before.
So I think when we heard people wanted more recycling opportunities, we heard that correctly. So that's a great, great indication for where our community's headed. The other thing I wanted to just clarify, you keep talking about every other week recycling, so that is clearly not twice a month recycling, that's every other week.
Correct. There's 26 recycling pickups.
In the past, we've gotten email reminder from PDC that it's our recycling when it was on a monthly basis. Will those be going away, or will those continue?
The plan is to eliminate that, that we can people roll off of the every other week recycling.
All right. Job well done. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Wither?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions on the recycling specifically. When will the new recycling carts be distributed that have been requested through the program?
Mr. Powell? So the new carts should be delivered next week to the community. They've had, because of the large number of people that signed up, there was an overwhelming number of carts that we had to order, or that PDC had to order, but those are all scheduled for delivery the week of December 17.
And then on an ongoing basis, how long would it be expected that a cart would be delivered after someone puts a request in?
Moving forward, within 20 days. So if a new person signs up for recycling and they do not have a cart, or they have not exceeded their two-cart maximum, within 20 days, they will have a recycling cart delivered to their house.
And then on the topic of the curbside pickup versus alley, I don't recall that being a topic of discussion in the contract deliberations, and I think this is going to cause an undue burden on some homeowners that may be elderly and have deep lots where they have a garage on the alley and that's where their carts are stored. Why are we going to this model of having them have to haul these out to the front curb?
I believe that was in order to meet the, or keep it at a reasonable rate for recycling and for the amount that the city was anticipating. That was in the proposal that PDC made in their alternative. I believe it was presented to council in the February meeting on their policy session for solid waste collection.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I'd just like to reiterate what Councilman Regenbach said. Great job. I'm very excited about the increase of already 3,000 households for recycling. It's something, it's a high priority for me, and I've been pushing for this, and I'm really glad that we were able to make it happen and that it is moving forward and it's having an impact. I do have one question, an issue that came up when we were looking at this garbage contract was those that wanted a refund of their deposit on their recycling carts. I've had a couple of people actually contact me in the last week, asking when they would receive those refunds back. Do you have any idea?
And that was a contract between the residents and PDC directly, but my understanding is that there were letters that went out in October for people to request a refund of their $50 deposit, and if they did submit that paperwork, that they would have it by the end of December.
Okay, so I can tell them, hopefully, they should get it by the end of the month?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Public Works? Seeing none, we would accept a motion to receive and file, Councilman Sears, seconded by Councilman Ruckregal. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for the presentation, Madam Clerk. Thank you for the presentation, Madam Clerk.
We're at Regular Business, eighteen dash three sixty-nine, is a request for authorization to enter into the following master services agreements. For two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one professional engineering services, there are nineteen different agreements. Item K, which is the Infrastructure Engineering Incorporated Agreement, has a yellow handout with a new agreement.
Uh, Director Reese, uh, or Mr. Manager, did you want to kind of summarize the way we're doing this?
Uh, sure. So, um, this is, uh, basically comes from, in two thousand and eleven, a- as part of the reduction in force, uh, the the engineering department, i- it was decided that we would do managed competition, um, for engineering services i- in the city. And we we reduced the number of in-house, uh, engineers, uh, substantially and turned the remaining engineers that were left into project managers. A- and part of that was we we decided to go for through this master service agreement process. A- and basically, we go through a quality qualifications-based selection process, um, for engineering companies, uh, in a three-year window. So, so this isn't just for, um, this this year or the nineteen, it's nineteen through twenty twenty-one. And and these are basically what's considered the the qualified firms to do work for the city of Peoria, um, with mastered with, uh, maximum dollar amount, uh, that we can issue work for them. So, when a a road project is approved in the capital budget or any project that that requires engineering services in in the capital budget, uh, the Public Works Department will go through and issue a a work order. And and sometimes we can request, um, prices from multiple engineering for firms for those work orders. A- and we can't exceed, we do not have authorization to exceed, um, these limits for each firm, uh, that are set forth before today. Um, i- if we go above that amount, uh, for some reason, we need to come back for council approval.
Okay, thank you. Uh, discussion on this item or motion? Uh, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Director, I think you know what my question is going to be, but I'll ask it anyway. Can you tell me how many of these nineteen firms are, um, are minority firms?
So, fifteen percent of the dollars, uh, there's roughly twenty million dollars, uh, here, um, before you tonight over the three years. If fifteen percent of that i- is identified for minority businesses and then another thirteen and a half percent for women-owned businesses.
So, you said fifteen for minority and thirteen and a half for women?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I could add, our our goal is ten percent and five percent, so.
Well, I want to thank you for, um, keeping that in mind as you looked at these, um, these qualified, um, firms, uh, because that's something that as a city, we need to continue to make sure that when we have contracts coming through, that we are maintaining some acceptable level of minority and women participation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Grab?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, this represents, uh, approximately twenty million dollars of work that the city of Peoria is outsourcing to private companies, which we cannot ourselves do in-house, correct?
Correct.
And, um, I see many of the firms here, firms we've done business with in the past, and this is going to help, uh, in the rebuild of our infrastructure, the rebuild of our city. And I look forward to, uh, this work being done. Um, Mr. Chairman, um, I move to approve all of these, A through S, but have them recorded separately by our city clerk.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Moore, is there further discussion on this item? Please let the record reflect that I will be abstaining on item D as I have a, uh, business relationship with CMT. Further discussion? There's a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Eighteen dash three seventy is a request, um, from the City Manager and Corporation Council regarding the site application for Class A Tavern liquor license with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol with a subclass one A, which is a two AM closing at Secrets VIP Lounge, eighteen oh one to eighteen oh three Southwest Adams, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve.
Uh, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on your desk, I placed an item, a two-page item that looks like this. And what you have in front of you is, uh, the, a picture of the front of this location. Um, and in larger print, it is a s- uh, more focused item that indicates what kind of venue it is. This is a venue that is primarily an event space. Uh, an event space much like some of the ones that we've opened in the Warehouse District. Um, one that recently opened with venue Sheska. It's a very nice place. If you've not been there, you need to go there. It's just very nice. Uh, except this is a much, much smaller venue. Uh, this venue is, um, being rented by an individual by the name of Alicia Collins. And the second page that you have there is a list of all of the events that she has had in the city of Peoria and in Rockford, actually, uh, over the last two years. And at on each date, it shows what that event was and and, uh, the approximate number of individuals who attended that event. Uh, on here, uh, you will see events that she's had at larger venues that had up to six hundred individuals and some that had smaller attendees, as small as, I think it was sixty on here. So, I I, and then also at the bottom of the left-right side of that second page, you see that she is using and have contracted with a security firm to provide, uh, security for her events. And to my knowledge, none of these events have had any police interaction. So, quite a few. Uh, she is renting a space now, uh, on Adam Street. I think she's been there for about three months. And as is indicated on this sheet, she's had three events there, one with alcohol, which was a catered event. So, the the caterer had her liquor license and so she was able to provide alcohol there. Uh, I then emailed all of, uh, everyone here around the council, um, a information that showed the exterior of the facility and what she's done to improve the facilities since she's been there. Now, all of this is coming because it has gone to the Liquor Commission. At this particular time, the Liquor Commission approved it. But there's there's, uh, quite a bit of opposition against her. And, uh, I will say that the opposition is coming from UFS, a organization, a company that I've known for a long time, much longer than I've known Alicia. Um, a a place that has stepped up for the South Side for as long as I've known. Uh, you may recall recently, well, not so recent, but, uh, in twenty thirteen, when Aldi closed on on Western, of their own volition, UFS stepped up and offered to start carrying groceries. That was outstanding. Uh, UFS is probably the largest retail location in our, in the South Side and employs the most people, uh, on from a retail standpoint on the South Side. And I'm very happy to report that quite a few minorities and women work there. So, uh, I don't have any concerns with, uh, the way they run their business. I respect what they do and I and I think, um, Tom and Pierre, well, now Pierre now, uh, they know that. Uh, I've visited there quite a bit of time, so I I hope to continue a good relationship with UFS. What this is about, however, is providing an opportunity for an individual, um, oh, let me finish. With, uh, UFS, they've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars improving that area. When I first became acquainted with UFS was when I was living in Bloomington and someone said, hey, I want you to go over to this place in Peoria called Unclaimed Freight. And I was intrigued by the name, Unclaimed Freight. Anyway, it suggested something fell off a freight truck, some freight car, and it was pulled into someplace. And I expected to see this flea market kind of place, but it wasn't. It was, it was, um, today, it it is, uh, a far cry from what it used to be and it is out absolutely outstanding. And Pierre needs to be and and Tom before and with him before, uh, need to be congratulated for all the work that they've done there. I mean, just an outstanding amount of work on their own dime and they've not taken anything from the city. Uh, Pierre reminded me that they did have a loan. I said, but that's not us giving you money, you paid that back. And so having said that, so that you know that, uh, I I respect everything they do and everything they've done and what they continue to do and and the way they contribute to this community. As we turn to Alicia Collins' facility, um, something, uh, came to mind today as I was speaking to someone and and I just wanted to make sure that you understand, what she is trying to do is what it is not, is what used to be called Club Envy. If you, I don't know if you remember that place. It's still there, it's called something else now, but it was a place that had all sorts of, that continues to have all sorts of police calls, along with a place, uh, down further on South Street that has all sorts of police call and violence and things. And and on this list of of reports, every bar, well, maybe not every bar, but it looks like every bar on Main Street across from the Pier Marquette have police calls on a regular basis. And there are other bars around town that also that are here that have police calls on a regular basis. What I would like for you to do is to approve, uh, allowing Secrets under Alicia Collins' direction to have her event room, um, with the full knowledge that prior to her coming to to run this operation, this place was AG Double Hockey Sticks on Wheels. I mean, this place had a lot of police calls, there was a lot of just crazy activity there. And if it was still under the same building owner, I would be the first to step up and say, no, we don't want this here. In fact, uh, those of you who were around the horseshoe when Carina's, the bar was called Carina's, may recall, I was the one who pushed for denial of that operation to continue because of how just the problems that it was and presented, not only for the business across the street, UFS, but for the community. Since that time, um, what used to be Carina's has been closed since December twenty sixteen. There's been nothing operating out of that location since that time. And the information you have, um, shows a re- a police report, and the police report goes all the way back through to twenty ten, I think it is. And if you look at it, the last police call at that location was September two thousand sixteen. So, since that time, there's been no police call at that location. But memories are long and people were tired of that constant, uh, problem that location has. I mean, if I was living over there at the time and this came up and it had been a constant bar, I too would be saying, no, don't approve that. But that's not what you have here before you today. You have an individual who has has evidence that she can run activities and events without police assistance. You have an individual who I would like not like not to see be painted with the broad brush of, well, you know, there was this activity and and the people in the community don't want that to continue. And I agree, I don't want it to continue too. Um, and Alicia, at the commission meeting, uh, has even agreed proactively to accept any kind of plan of operation, um, that would, um, be, uh, generated or created by a committee that would include UFS. She wants an opportunity to show that she too, just like what we have opening in the Warehouse District, can run an event venue that offers alcohol and is willing to have her hands or her business tied by anything that's in a plan of operation that you pro- propose. And so, uh, what I will not, um, what I will tell you is that this is not something that, in my opinion, is against UFS, because I have every respect for UFS. But both the UFS and Alicia reside in my district. Lisa's a homeowner in the district, first district, she lives across the street from Treewind School. And it is my responsibility to speak for those folks in my district, just like I speak for UFS, I speak for Alicia. And just as I respect what UFS has done, uh, I've not, I've, I can see also what Alicia has done. And so with that, I will yield and take any questions that you have.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Any second for the motion? I'm seeing no motion for the second, so the motion would die for a lack of a second. So, do we need to dispose of this with a motion to deny? Or is the lack of a second, uh?
Lack of a second motion.
Your Honor, if there's a lack of a second, the motion dies.
Okay.
Without any further action.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
We're at Unfinished Business, eighteen dash two seventy-five, is a a request to adopt an ordinance amending chapter thirteen of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to refuse containers. There is a motion on the floor to adopt the ordinance.
Councilwoman Agerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to, um, defer this for two weeks.
Okay. It'll be the first meeting in January.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm sorry.
First meeting in January.
We don't want to be here on Christmas, right? Um, for four weeks.
Okay. First meeting in January, seconded by, uh, Councilmember Jensen. Um, discussion on the deferral? Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Eighteen dash, uh, three one five is a request to adopt an ordinance amending chapter twenty-six of the Code of the City of Peoria, uh, designating standards of constructions for sidewalks. And it's not listed on your agenda, but there is a motion on the floor to approve.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Moore?
You said there was a motion on the floor to approve?
Yes.
Okay, I second the motion.
But we just vote if, unless there's discussion.
Yeah. Um, discussion on the item? Councilwoman Jensen?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have a question for Director Black about, um, I know that, uh, the recommendation is to replace brick sidewalks with brick only if it's located in a local historic district. Does that include national historic districts?
Uh, well, I, let me answer the question about the the district. As to the intent of the recommendation, I'll defer to Director Reese. But, but, no, the local districts and the national districts are two separate designations. Uh, there may be situations where a local district is entirely within a national district. However, they are two different designations.
As as a follow-up then to that, do you know what areas in the city are are national historic districts that don't include local historic districts?
Um, national districts that do not include local districts. Um, so there is the Warehouse National District. As of earlier today, uh, I I believe, uh, the Downtown National District is now listed.
Okay.
Um, we have the, um, West Bluff National District, which has local districts within it, but the boundaries are not quoterminous. And then there is the Northside Historic District. And again, there is a, uh, local district within the Northside District, but the boundaries are not quoterminous. There is the Grandview Historic District, which is a national district, and I don't believe there's any local districts inside that boundary. I believe that's it for national districts. And within all of these national districts, even if there isn't a local district, there may be local landmarks, and those I have not committed to memory, so.
That's okay. Um, another follow-up then, how many local historic districts are there? Do you know? Off the top of your head?
So, um, I think, I think I'm getting, it might be attached to the council. So, there's thirty-one landmarks and districts.
Those are just districts, not landmark?
Districts, so the local districts, we have the Perry Avenue Historic District, uh, Glen Oak Historic District. District, Flora Ellis, Moss High, Randolph Roanoke, Knoxville Avenue. That would be, so one, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay. And they're mostly the West Bluff or the East Bluff?
Yes, West Bluff, Glen Oak, a small district on the near north side, and then the Knoxville Historic District further north.
Thank you. I guess now I have a question for you, Director Reese. If this proposed ordinance were modified to include all the national historic districts, would that be, what would that impact be? I imagine that's a lot more properties. Kind of the purpose is to give developers in the Warehouse District and downtown more flexibility?
Well, I think it's more of a policy decision of what the council wants to see and where they wanted to find. We're just trying to make it clear so that when somebody applies for a sidewalk permit, they knew exactly what the rules were that they needed to replace. Because currently, it's silent. The code does not say what it has to be replaced at. It just says that it has to be walkable, or there has to be new sidewalk put in. So if you were to make it the National Historic District versus the local, I mean, it would be a bigger area, I believe.
Okay. And I do support that we have this requirement, at least in the local historic districts. One question that I raised the last time we brought this up was about permeable, permeable pavement, and I don't think it got changed. Was that considered, or?
Yes, it was considered. And permeable, our feeling is, or our interpretation of the recommendation or the ordinance language is that permeable pavers would be allowed because they're a brick. There's nothing in there that does not allow the permeable pavers to go in. It's just a different form of brick.
Okay, so those would be permissible if we were to adopt a policy that you have to replace brick with brick?
Correct.
That would include permeable pavers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Have Councilmember Agasson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it possible for us to include the national historic districts in this ordinance with the knowledge that in the districts that you've mentioned, the Downtown and the Warehouse, I don't think that there are any brick sidewalks, are there? Curious.
There's brick streets and the warehouse.
No, I don't think that there are any brick sidewalks.
I'd have to look through the Warehouse District and see. That would be, I don't believe there's any in the Downtown area, but the Warehouse District, some of the side streets might have some, or the Jansen Building. Yeah, and the Downtown area is granite sidewalk, actually.
The Jansen Building has granite. I don't think that would be the same as brick. So in that particular case, we would want that to be replaced with granite. I mean, I think that the unintended consequences of, you know, being okay with cement when something that had been, I think that if we could, if we could defer to what was there originally, and, you know, I don't, I'm in favor of the brick sidewalks to be maintained and continue and rejuvenated if you're looking for a policy decision on this.
I had Councilmember Moore.
Mayor, in, I think it was September or October, this item became an issue with the council as a result of community members, one community member objecting to Habitat for Humanity, replacing old brick sidewalks. When they built the house, they put in new sidewalks there. And as a result of that disturbance, Director came to us and said he was in the middle, and he wanted to get out of the middle, and we needed a policy session. And we had that policy session. Out of that policy session came this document that you have before you. The document came before us November thirteenth. I was asked to defer it, and it came back on the twenty-seventh. It was, there was a request to defer it again. It was supposed to come on the Fourth of December. You know what we had on the Fourth of December? It was our budget hearing, so it was asked to be moved to the eleventh, and here we are. And so this is a direct result of the policy session that we had. I would ask Director Black, is there, would there be anything that would preclude us from expanding the list of places that would be bound by this agreement after we approved this tonight, should it be approved tonight? Is there anything that would keep us from expanding this and to capture other areas if we wanted to?
I don't believe so. I believe the council could modify it at its pleasure going forward.
Thank you. And so with that being said, I would like to go ahead and put this to bed. We've had the policy session that was requested. This is what came out of the policy session. It was approved for receiving a file here some weeks later. I would like to get this thing done. So with that, I'd like to proceed with a vote if we could. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Agasson.
Okay, I'm a little confused. In this, in this council communication, in the second paragraph, it says, "Staff is requesting the council make a policy decision regarding whether brick sidewalks are to be replaced with brick or concrete." And I thought I heard the director say they're looking for direction. And now I'm here, and we've had a policy session. I don't recall the policy session. So do we, is, did we have a policy session?
We had a first reading on the item, I believe, and.
So then that would not, then that would not be a policy session. We didn't reach any conclusions. We didn't have any conversation. Especially if it was deferred, then there is no conversation when something's deferred. So it seems like this is ripe for scheduling a policy session.
Moore.
It came to a first reading. Right now, it's up for a vote, which suggests that the first reading, it had, if I recall correctly, it has to be approved at the first reading for then to come now. Is, am I mistaken? Direct clerk, I'm sorry, clerk ball.
Well, a first reading is where you, you know, kind of, you're.
Discuss it?
Yes, yes. You discuss it and suggest new things to come back.
Right.
And so it came back, and it's been back several times now. So this is the result of those deferrals.
Thank you. And so, so that we can close the book on this, no, excuse me, not close the book, this is a chapter, because you heard the director say, if we wanted to add to it in the future, there's no problem doing that. So I'm a little confused as to what the confusion is to move forward with this. So he asked for direction. That's why this got started in the first place. Is that correct, Director? That this is why you asked for direction back in September, October? This got started. We're providing you direction. Now we need to vote on it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Just to clarify, the ordinance that you would be voting on to approve states that brick will be replaced with brick in local historic districts. That's the motion on the floor.
Right. Councilmember Reganback.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Councilwoman Moore has a very valid point here. This is something we've talked about at some length, although maybe not as much as some members would like. But I don't think there's any disagreement that what the manager just said is what, we want to move forward with that. We want brick replaced with brick at a minimum in the local historic districts. So at this time of year, I can't imagine that there's any specific project lined up that this is, that this will impact. But would it, if it would please the council, why don't we approve this so that we've got something in a minimum standard now, and then schedule a policy session to see if there's the will to expand it to the national historic districts? That way, we get this on the books. Brick-to-brick is going to be the standard, and it allows us, and then gives us good standing to expand that into all historic districts in the future. But it doesn't continue to delay getting the first step taken. So that would be my suggestion. Let's approve this tonight, a policy session, as to whether or not there's the appetite to expand it to all national historic districts as well.
Okay. Councilman Grab.
Seems to be very reasonable, and in view of the fact that previous council, a number of years ago, made a decision to preserve the brick streets in our neighborhoods and not to put asphalt over them, and that we would continue to repair brick with brick, this seems to be a no-brainer. And so, you know, I can certainly support it. There are streets that are brick in various parts of the city where there is no national historic district or city-prescribed historic district. And previous council said, hey, leave the brick the way it is. It wears longer than asphalt. And we were told by the Public Works Director then, Steve Van Winkle, that we had plenty of brick to repair those, and you're nodding yes. And we've been repairing the brick streets over in the, what, Armstrong Ellis area and elsewhere, certainly in District Two. So I don't know what the big deal is here. Seems pretty simple. I agree with my esteemed colleagues on this. I don't mind a policy session on, on anything somebody wants it on, but.
Okay. Councilmember Agasson.
So perhaps we don't need a policy session. We just expand it to the national historic districts and call it a day, tonight? And that would settle it? I think, what would be the process? Make a motion, an amended motion?
If you want to throw a substitute motion on the floor, you're welcome to do that.
Yeah, I would like to throw a substitute motion to include the national historic districts.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Discussion on the motion on the floor. Councilman Ruckregal.
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to the substituted motion, I think we had a motion on there that I think was probably very workable for most of the council. I find it interesting that, and I'm not opposed to having the conversation long-term about brick in farther areas, but again, we're doing tonight trying to make policy decisions without any information. It's the law of unintended consequences. As a matter of fact, we've had our map and our districts in our hands for a couple of days, and yet we have questions about where these actual districts are. But now, all of a sudden, we're going to add them in. I'm not opposed to having a policy session, but we have something in front of us tonight prior to this. So my thought would be, vote this down, go back to the original motion, let's get that passed. If we decide we want to add it in, after we do the research, after we, we don't have an idea about what it's going to cost for entities that are in those areas, if they actually want to be brick-for-brick. I like brick sidewalks personally, so, but I think we need to have a little bit more information before we just arbitrarily just decide that we're going to make a change without any information. I mean, literally ten minutes ago, we had questions about what was in by some people and what was out, and it was right here in our packet the whole time.
Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm open to having a discussion about how to handle the national historic districts at a later date in a policy discussion, but my concern at the time is that I've spent a lot of time in some of these areas, and I've seen where there are single houses that have brick in front of them linked up to concrete on both sides. And in many cases, they aren't maintained. And why would we force someone to put brick back in those scenarios just to link up to concrete on the other side at an added expense? I fully support the concept of putting brick back where there is brick in the areas that make sense, but I think we have to have a bigger look at what those areas are, which we don't have the information to do that tonight. But I would definitely support having this discussion with the information at a later time.
Councilman Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Calling for a vote, please.
We have just a couple more people that haven't addressed this side before we call the question. Councilman Grab, unless there's a second to call the question, which I did. All right, we're going to call the question. We have a motion to second on the substitute motion. Please cast your ballots. That motion fails with three ayes and seven nos, voting yes, Councilmembers Agasson, Grab, and Jensen. So we're back to the original motion on the floor, which is to approve. Any final discussion on that one? Councilman Grab, did you have something?
No.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to second on the original motion to approve. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Eighteen dash three forty-six is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter Five of the Code of the City of Peoria relating to registration of residential property and inspection of dwellings. This is actually two ordinances, and the first ordinance is the registration of residential property, which has been replaced in a yellow copy on your desk. There's also a replacement communication, council communication for this item that's also on your desk. So the replacement ordinance pertains to the registration of residential property, and then the ordinance that pertains to inspections of dwellings is the one that's in your packet. So we would need two separate motions and votes on these two ordinances. Thank you.
Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's nice to finally be at a point where we can take a vote on this. It's been many months in the works here between the Realtors Association and our Community Development Department, and a group of landlords in our Community Development Department. Several months ago, we were at a point where both of these sections had a considerable number of issues in them for both parties, and through a lot of great work on all sides of the table here, even as late as a few hours ago, which is why you have yellow handouts on your desk, we have finally gotten this to a point where we are ready to pass. So I enthusiastically make a motion to approve the residential property registration component.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Ruckregal. Discussion on the motion. Councilwoman Moore.
Yes, Director Black, can you outline for us, it sounds like last few hours there were some additional changes. Can you outline the difference between what we had originally and what we have in front of us in the yellow sheets?
Sure. Thank you. A few changes that are probably material. Some of the changes were just wording, like I can also go over it. But effectively, as you will recall from the conversation earlier this year, what this does is it sets up a discounted registration rate for property owners who meet certain standards. And what we have been discussing with property owners in town over the last few weeks are kind of how those standards would be classified. What it's come down to is that the property owner does not owe any outstanding funds to the City of Peoria. And so one of the changes there is we added the word "city" in front of utility bills, just to clarify that that would be funds owed to a city utility and not to a private utility the city would have no knowledge of anyway. We also added in that September fifteenth would be the deadline in terms of determining if any funds were owed. So just to kind of walk you through the calendar, registrations are due in March. They can begin in January of each year. But we wanted to make sure that there was adequate time if someone received a fine or a fee that they wanted to dispute, that they had opportunity to dispute that. And so September fifteenth was kind of the cutoff for just allowing enough time for due process to work. The second item, so those are a couple of wording changes. The second item remained the same, that the property owner has no, has not received a judgment. The second item remained the same, that the property owner has not received a judgment or a default from the hearing officer, that the property owner has not received a judgment or default for criminal housing management, and that no judgment has been entered against the property owner, either in circuit or federal court. So basically, what we're saying is that the property owner must have paid attention to any violations that were at their properties. I think it's important to note, as one of the changes here from the draft several months ago was, the draft included things such as work orders issued or environmental violations. This has put them aside. And it's basically said, if the property owner has a problem at their property, you know, things happen, then as long as they have resolved that without having some type of judgment or some type of outstanding fee or fine owed to the city, then they can get the discounted rate. So they're maintaining their property, and that's what we're after. The remainder of this remains the same as was discussed several months ago, that if the property owner does not meet the criteria listed here, if they go to the landlord training, then they can register for $125. If they decide that they're not going to go to the landlord training and they don't meet the criteria, then it's $250. So that part hasn't changed. Really, the core of the change was just some of the wording changes and really a focus on making sure that the property owner has an opportunity to remedy any problems that show up at their property.
Any further questions for Director? We have a motion to approve in a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. And then we'd be on the inspections piece. Councilman Euler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the inspections piece of eighteen three forty-six.
Okay, and that was seconded by Councilmember Ruckregal. Is there a discussion on this item? Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you. Director, is there, have you already touched on the inspections piece as well, since we're doing that separately?
No, ma'am, I did not. There were no changes really to this from the earlier discussion with the council. Effectively, the changes from past years is that the inspection form will now have to be submitted as part of the registration process. Needs to be signed off by the landlord and the tenant. The landlord has to disclose to the tenant if there are any current administrative hearing officer cases on the property, so the tenant is aware that there is an active enforcement case. We are working to put together a tenant's rights and responsibilities brochure because they go hand-in-hand, and those will be distributed also. And finally, the self-inspection form has, or will be modified to have language in there as to who is responsible for the supply of cooking appliances. So it doesn't necessarily say that cooking appliances have to be supplied by the landlord, but it needs to specify if they are supplied or if they are not supplied.
Did I hear you say that those tenant forms would have to be submitted when landlord registration takes place?
That is correct, when registration takes place.
That could be a lot of paper. Are you ready for that?
We are, we are ready, yes.
And so I would like for you to come back after the landlord registration to perhaps pictorially show us how much paper was received, because that's going to be a lot of paper.
We will be happy to do that. We are in discussion with a couple of companies about making this an electronic process, but I'm not sure that we're going to be there for the 2019 registration.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion on this, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
If there's no further unfinished business?
Do we have any unfinished business tonight? Unfinished business? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As is our custom with not having, usually our custom has been that we will not have a second meeting in the month of December. And since I discussed with Councilwoman Aikerson earlier, the motion to defer the item on refuse containers to Christmas Day, we would like to go ahead and not have that meeting and ask the clerk to send out an appropriate notice that we will not be having a meeting on Christmas Day this year.
So noted. Any other unfinished business? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
We would be at new business?
Any new business to come before the council? New business, Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Officer Chris White for his service as a residential officer in the First District on the South Side. As some of you may not know, and he probably is going to not be happy when I announce, you probably know he got married, and he and his family are going to be moving to a bigger house. And I think they've already done that, as a matter of fact. And as a result, he has stepped down from his role as a residential officer. He has provided outstanding, Chief, where are you? He has provided outstanding service to the South Side community. I mean, they would feed this guy. I mean, they would go over with treats to him. I'm surprised he is able to get in and out of his door because he was being fed all the time, at least when he was single. Now his wife is feeding him. But I just wanted to let everyone know that we have police officers in this town doing phenomenal work. And as you know, as a residential officer, he's on call 24/7. And he has been there, and he has been called, and it has been outstanding. And so I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that on behalf of the First District and particularly the South Side, that we commend Officer White for all that he provided to the community, all the community building, all the mentorship he provided, everyone, but particularly little boys in the community, with his own children, showing how real men work in a community. And it's been outstanding, and I appreciate that, Chief. So you need to clone him and hire more of him.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business, Councilman Euler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to take the opportunity to welcome a large group of my colleagues from the Peoria Area Association of Realtors to the meeting tonight. I believe in light of some of the disparaging comments made around the horseshoe last Tuesday night, some of them will be speaking during public comments and telling us what a contribution that they make to the City of Peoria. And I'd like to thank you for your contribution and what a phenomenal job you do in selling Peoria. Thank you.
Any other new business to come before the council tonight? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Citizens to address, name for the record. We have a five-minute speaking limit. We're going to have several. It looks like Mr. Colbus is going to hand this off to several people to make sure that each person stays within the five minutes. So I have Mr. Colbus, Suzanne Miller, and Pat McCarthy among maybe others. So, Mr. Colbus?
I will try to be really fast. My name is Jeff Colbus. I live at 6118 West Waterstone Way in Edwards. I am here representing the Peoria Area Association of Realtors. I don't live in the city of Peoria, but my wife and I own or have ownership interest in multiple companies that are all located in the city of Peoria, most of them in Districts 3 and 4. I'm going to ask the PAR members to raise their hands. Thank you. I want, I'm going to start with a question. How many of you love Peoria? Raise your hands if you love Peoria. Anybody in the gallery? Interesting. So do I. So does PAR. We all want the same thing, a strong and vibrant city of Peoria. We all know that with a strong Peoria, the rest of our area will thrive. We all, we'll get to how we are going to accomplish this as I proceed. I do want to respond to some of the comments that were made at last week's meeting. First of all, the postcard. The Illinois Realtors have been advocating on behalf of private property rights for as long as they've been in existence. The email, text, and postcard campaign that was used for the public safety fee is an example of something that the Illinois Realtors have been doing for nearly 30 years. We are not your enemies. We want to help and have long been involved with local governments assisting with our expertise in various areas. This was not a hit piece. This was information being sent to residents to inform them of what the city was considering to balance their budget. There was no inaccurate information on that piece. The amount stated on the card was the amount that the city manager and council were considering at the time the campaign was launched. While we are not happy with these new fees, the lowering of the amount in the inclusion of the three-year sunset make it slightly easier on your property owners, your property owners. Receiving over 2,500 calls, I understand that's closer to 3,000 emails and texts from your constituents is, like Councilwoman Aikerson said, great citizen involvement. You should want to hear from your citizens. Our members work with buyers and sellers every day. Our recent campaign is based on members of, our members' conversations with their clients. While you hear people talking about our affordable housing market, what you don't hear is the concerns over our real estate taxes. We've been told that Illinois has one of the highest real estate taxes in the country. We've also been told that Peoria is one of the highest in the state. Where does that leave our citizens? They must consider these taxes when looking at real estate. It's all part of their monthly payment that they have to budget for. Second, us coming to the table with solutions. It was mentioned that we need to come to the table with solutions, and why did we wait until the last minute for this campaign? In our opinion, the city needs to look for solutions to its budget issues from sources other than continuing to use its property owners as the city's ATM machine. We have come to the council with suggestions for other sources of revenue only to have our suggestions denied. PAR has been involved with the CEO Council for years, and we supported the recommendation that the city explore the purchase of the water company. We actually spoke to this recommendation in this chamber just a few weeks ago. We have also been a financial supporter of the Downtown Development Corporation. I am currently serving as the Vice Chair of the DDC. We are involved with the core of our city, where walkability is happening. The city should be doing everything it can to support the efforts of the DDC. Redeveloping the core of the city will add tax dollars without increasing the city's requirement to maintain new infrastructure. We have been involved with the city over the last five-plus years. We have been reaching out to council members to discuss our city. As recent as the middle of October, we have discussed high real estate taxes with both the mayor and other council members. We know real estate and we know property values. It's what we do every day. We also know your property owners are feeling the pain of all these real estate fees and taxes. We don't know the city finances like you all do. It's hard for us to come to the table with solutions other than those involving real estate. Steering buyers away from Peoria. Another comment that was made, that members steer buyers to North Peoria or away from District 150 schools. You are suggesting that we break the law. That is not true. Buyers tell us their price range, bedrooms, baths, garages, and if important to them, the school districts that they will consider. They have done their homework on the community prior to reaching out to us. If they want to buy a $150,000 home, the commissions are not higher depending on the area or the school district. Commissions are set by the sellers, not the geographic area. We work with buyers and sellers throughout Peoria, not just North Peoria. PAR members have helped nearly 6,000 buyers find homes and businesses in our area so far in 2018. Over 2,000 of those were in the city limits of Peoria. The largest amount of those were in the Peoria Central High School District. The next highest amount was in Richards. Each of these were over 540 properties. We know one of the school districts you were thinking about was Dunlap. Did you know that over 500 properties have been sold so far this year in the Dunlap School District? But did you also know that 85% of those are located in the city of Peoria boundaries? These are still your citizens. They have a choice in their housing needs. We can't treat them differently because they choose to live where they do. We don't steer people. Buyers come to us with their price range and other criteria. We search for homes that match this criteria, period. I'm almost done, if that's okay. I've been a Realtor for over 25 years. I have never once heard of anyone steering people in their housing needs. Our PAR CEO has been in her position for over 30 years and never once has there been a complaint filed against one of our members for steering. Steering is against federal fair housing laws. I would ask anyone in this room to show us an example of steering. I ask that you bring it to us because it's a violation of the law and it can be dealt with. PAR members don't know anything about property values, was mentioned. I'm not sure exactly how to respond to this. Realtors are fully aware of property values. It's our profession. Our, I mean, your citizens rely on our knowledge of property values, and we work hard to stay educated on real estate and to be their trusted experts. In closing, in 2020, PAR is going to celebrate its 100th year in the Peoria area. Over half of our members live in the city of Peoria. They have a personal stake in the success of our city. We are not here to be thorns in your side. We are here to help make Peoria a great place to live and work. We want to help. We know you have had tough decisions to make, and balancing this budget was not easy. We thank you for all you do for our city. We would love to be part of your Blue Ribbon Commission. We know that we can add value to that group. I want to close with where I started. I love Peoria. The members of PAR love Peoria, and we know you do too. We all need to make decisions with that in mind. We all want Peoria to be a place where its people and businesses are proud to call home. All of us need to work together to make that happen. Thank you for the opportunity, and sorry I went over.
Carrie, we don't have anybody else, so if you want to address this, come on up.
05 Northeast Perry Avenue. I find the discussion on the curbside recycling outrageous for those who live in heritage neighborhoods. I first learned about this, that it was going to be curbside at Thursday's breakfast chat. And then I had a conversation with Director Reese and exchanged some emails. And the contract specifically says, all recyclable materials will be collected at the curb, and locations where alley service is currently provided, changes in service location must be approved by the city. That's what the citizens had to go on. Now you're saying that those of us that have a 175-foot lot are going to take our toders from the back where our garage is and where our garbage pads are and carry them through or walk them through the snow and ice to the front of our properties and try to put them on the street where people park all the time. Absolutely outrageous. Let me say it again. It's outrageous. You are not doing anything to protect those of us in the older neighborhoods who are struggling with all kinds of challenges, and now we have to put our recycling out to the front. Second, outrageous, the public service pension fee, okay? I don't know who's responsible for this, but it's absolutely outrageous that you can't even get the ordinance correct, okay? The sample ordinance says that you're going to assess a fee for residential and commercial real estate. Then down in the public safety fees, it says you're going to, for, you had to have a, you had to have a building on your property to get charged. Then under the public safety pension fee, under eighteen six five nine, it says, but you're going to charge something with, that has no structure, they get a fee too. Then if you looked at the ordinance that's passed, there's nothing about a lot that has no structure. It says, which contains a single structure or multiple structures. Ordinance seventeen thousand six hundred and forty-nine, which I got from the city clerk. Additionally, there's no sunset fee in this ordinance. There's a schedule for a five-year collecting of this fee. There is no idea of how a commission will be established in this ordinance. Additionally, you are going to use these funds that are collected from not-for-profits and hospitals and churches and everything else to abate the portion of the city's property tax levies. They don't pay property tax, so how are you using a fee to abate their property taxes that they don't pay? And additionally, there's nowhere in here that it says who's going to be billed. It doesn't say whether the property owner's going to be billed or the leasee is going to be billed. It doesn't say that, it only says under the delinquency, that if there's a delinquency, then the owner's going to get notified that they're delinquent. It's absolutely outrageous how sloppy this stuff is. And I wasn't even coming here tonight, but I was so enraged that nobody took... but I was so enraged that nobody took the part of those of us that live in the older neighborhood when this contract clearly says, all recyclable materials will be collected at the curb, and locations where alley service is currently provided, changes in service location must be approved by the city. That's by Public Works, okay? I've been a recycler in my neighborhood for years. I may even just decide I'm not going to recycle, because I don't want to have to take my stuff out to the curb, and it's another way that you make our neighborhoods unmarketable or less marketable, because 1,700 people in the older neighborhoods just aren't good enough to be able to maintain alley pickup for all of their garbage, trash, and recyclable things. Thank you. I'll fill out the card in a minute.
Madam Clerk.
We do not have an executive session, so we're at adjournment.
We have a motion to adjourn. Councilman Grab, seconded by Councilman Seer. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank our listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. We'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, safe, peaceful holidays. This meeting is adjourned.